Town meeting warrant articles reviewed. Union building update, contract with Pappas Industries for the general contractor for the exterior restoration. Or release of overlay funds. And then we'll be going into executive session pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A three. Pursuant to purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions with respect to collective bargaining with the police union NEPA local seven. We will be coming out of executive session back into public session to review the Dunstable Police Union contract. And that is it. Open up to the public. Anybody in the public who would like to speak to something not on the agenda? There being none, we will move on. All right. So we have a set of meeting minutes from April eighth. So in motion.
Move to approve the meeting minutes from April eighth, two oh two five, as submitted. Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Next up, repairs to the library. Contract with ATE Painting to do slew of things over there.
We heard the project. We were seeing the level of success bids. The low bid did not acknowledge the addenda that were.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that he was out. And so the next lowest bid was thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, ATE Painting. We've checked references and I've talked to them, made a meeting with them last Friday, and we're comfortable with proceeding. We, it should be noted, we received seventy-five thousand dollar earmarked in this, in the state budget to fund firefighter PPE and library repairs. Thirty-five thousand was earmarked for the PPE, leaving a remaining balance of forty thousand for the library.
So we're right on target.
Well, not quite.
No.
Because we've spent sixty-three hundred in design funding.
Okay.
So what's left is a sixty-two hundred dollar gap between state funding that we have and the contract price. So we do have capital money from FY twenty-five that is available to spend. We had planned for a higher estimate for the police work, police station work that is about to get started. And so we have, we have some flexibility within our capital allotment for this year that we can use to fund the contract.
Okay. Is that thirty-five for the PPE solid? We have actual price for those? Is there any?
It's been ordered. That was the original earmark. It's right. It's not quite right there, but it's.
Very close.
It's very close.
Nothing that'll help us?
Not, it, it, it will help, but not by the entire amount. It might, it's like, I think it left the balance of slightly less than a thousand dollars. So we will be able to apply a little more to that, but not much more.
There's, this isn't a tariff situation on the PPE. So the tariffs won't get dinged with like a, the PPE won't get dinged with like a tariff?
Orders it, no. We have the prep, yeah, yeah. And we have the invoice, we have the price. We're just waiting for delivery.
All right.
What was the, I just want to know for myself, because it doesn't mean anything other than me. The library little bidder that was disqualified, how much was left on the table between him and the second guy?
So the, the price that they submitted was somewhere right shot of fifteen, fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. I have no confidence that the project could be done for that amount.
Yeah.
So it wasn't, it was really a bid integrity issue in addition to not acknowledging an addendum?
I, I don't.
I don't know how you could do that job for fourteen thousand. I have no idea.
No.
It's not reasonable. Was he looking at the right job?
I don't know. So like I said, we received six bids. That was the low bid. I bet we had to disqualify them. The high bid was in the construction for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Nealing construction?
Yeah. I don't know. But then there were three bids that were right, were between eighty thousand and seventy-three thousand.
That's a huge jump between those.
And then there was the ATE four thirty-nine nine. I know that they came out and viewed the site. They did a site visit, ATE Painting I'm talking about now. He came back and talked to me about the project. He had questions. I sent him back to look at the building again.
Yeah.
Like I said, I talked to him Friday to confirm his understanding of the scope of work and the price. And, and we did reference checks. I think his bid's good.
Okay.
And we just think the other ones like Legacy and FRG are just too hot? I mean, obviously they're hot, but they're just.
It's a forty, forty grand jump between them.
I'm just trying to understand why. Because you have three, the median number is about seventy to eighty. You have one way outside and you have two low.
Yeah, it's, it's like with the Union Building now, the difference between the two is.
Yeah.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It's the bid.
I know, but if we qualified the guy, does he have to have a bid bond?
It's got to have.
He has a.
Performance bond.
Payment bond.
Payment bond, yeah.
Yeah.
And we have the bond already or not?
Not yet.
So once we sign the contract, he's going to issue a bond?
Correct.
He's not going to get it out of some bank in Yugoslavia or something?
I talked to his.
Bonding company?
No, no, but his staff. Admin, I think admin, staff, or office manager, or project manager type. And she's just waiting for the word to, she knew exactly what she had to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're qual, you're comfortable that this guy's qualified to do this job?
I am.
Yeah.
I move to approve the contract between the town of Dunstable and ATE Painting for repairs to the public library's window trim, soffits, fascia, gutters, and exterior door, keyway door, in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. And authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the board. Second.
Any further discussion? None? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, very good. Okay. Updating on the treasure collector position.
Okay, well, some good news. So we've had, we've been interviewing candidates. We haven't interviewed a ton of candidates, but we have been interviewing candidates for months.
Yes.
And we, we're fortunate to have a recent candidate we've interviewed, has gone through the process and has accepted the position, the regional position between Dunstable and Pepperell. Theresa O'Leary, she's currently the treasure collector in act, and she's been there since twenty seventeen. We're excited to have her. We're not quite ready to ask the board to appoint her because I'm hoping she'll be here so you can all meet, meet, meet her and talk to her. So, but, but we're very excited about getting her on board. And also just want to thank, once again, Bonnie Riccadelli for, for being such a good team player and supporting us in our time of need because it wouldn't be as easy, for sure, without her. So really, really appreciate it, Bonnie.
Okay.
Is she coming tonight or is it just an update?
No, it's just that I just wanted to give you an update. No action needed.
Excellent.
Okay, yeah, that is, that is good news. Okay, so the annual town meeting warrant.
So there have been some changes. We went through this at a draft at the last select board meeting. There have been some changes. I'm trying to remember exactly which ones there were. I think the two, I think the two that are new are Article thirteen, Larder Field Master Plan that was approved by the CPC, and then Article fifteen, the tennis and pickleball court at Larder Field. As you know, that project's essentially wrapped up, not quite though. There may be a need, depending on what the planning board does, for a supplemental, one more additional supplemental appropriation to fund the final still monitor drainage work that, that the engineers, that the town engineers recommend. So, but other than those two items, everything else is as it was on the eighth, I think your last meeting was. We can, if you want to run through them, you can. Again, if not, they're, they're literally the same as we went through last time.
I don't have a lot of questions. I don't have a lot of questions. My only question, when I look at our agenda, you're asking us for two votes.
One to approve the warrant and one to approve sponsoring certain articles.
Once the warrant in its entirety, and which one to be monosupportive. Okay.
My, my only question was on, say, this was coming up in another town, in Article twenty-one, this amended floodplain district. How does that impact folks that may see that their house is now in a floodplain?
We've already gone through it and there have been no significant, there've been no changes to our floodplains, no properties.
Okay.
That will be significantly impacted.
And we don't have to like notify it, but like, just like as a matter of practice, we don't have to notify someone if like all of a sudden your house on Main Street was incre, is now a part of that?
I don't know if there's a. We didn't have any of that.
Well, no, we didn't have anyone impacted.
Yeah.
Nobody, okay.
I don't think we could find one residential home that was affected.
Not where there was not in a floodplain and is now in a floodplain. There were somewhere, if the house was already in a floodplain and extended a little further into the property, but there wouldn't, not any that were encumbered where they hadn't.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I just think of like homeowner's insurance rates, like if all of a sudden you realize like, oh, jump, you know, crap.
Yeah.
My taxes are going up and so is like, oh, my insurance because of this.
Well, they are, and, and we'll be fine if that happens. And it wasn't picked up in any of our reviews for that happening. But there is still a process that a homeowner can go through to get a LOMA where they get a, an engineering certificate. They go out and survey to see what the line actually is. I mean, this is still, they're still based on, not theoretical elevations, because they're getting more and more data to set those elevations, but you can still get micro topographies to contract that.
Okay.
So there are options for people.
This is something.
That's something they have to do.
Yeah. And this is something that, you're right, every community, essentially every community has to do.
Yeah.
To adopt the new FEMA maps and to, just to ensure that people can get flood insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, but most, most people don't have flood insurance.
Well, if you're in a floodplain, if you are in it.
But if you're not a floodplain or you become in a floodplain.
You're going to need to get it.
That's right. If you can afford it.
Well.
But, but it also changes the, the ability to sell your house if all of a sudden the three hundred year floodplain map.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's just, as I know in a neighboring town, people were coming up to the planning office and they were wrecked.
Yeah.
Because all of a sudden they're like, well, you just killed the value of my house. And really, it's not the town, it's FEMA.
It is.
But who are they going to ask questions of?
Yeah. So, yeah, we, again, we, we did most of, most of it, but we did look at it. There didn't appear to be anyone in Dunstable affected by the change in maps.
Okay.
Move to approve the annual town meeting warrant to be presented to the residents of the town of Dunstable at the annual town meeting on Monday, May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven PM at the Swallow Union Elementary School. Second.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 So there really aren't too many that we need to take a stance on. Article one's reports, two's unpaid bills, article three, transfer to Water Enterprise Fund, article four, transfer to General Stabilization Fund, five is transferred to the Capital Improvement Program Stabilization Fund, article six is operating budget, seven is the revolving fund expenditure limits, article eight, capital improvement to four municipal departments, article nine, water system infrastructure improvements.
Is there going to be a presentation of what they're going to do or just a?
For water? I think for water, they want some of their retaining earning set aside in the case they need it, basically, because they don't really have that baked in their budget.
Okay.
So if there's a water break or if there's something else that happens that they need to respond to, they want some money set aside for that purpose.
Okay. So there's nothing, there's no particular improvements that need to be made under this article right now?
I don't think they have any specific plans for it.
How much are they going to hold?
Thirty-five, thirty-five thousand.
Is there nothing?
Retained, retained earnings is for twenty-five, I believe, was about sixty-eight thousand.
So they're going to take about half of it and put it in a kitty for water system upgrades?
Yeah. Or, you know, or.
It's really.
Yeah.
I mean, it's wise to do that.
Well, they have, there is a pretty significant liability at the pump station because it has a skater in it, right? The computers don't know what to do. It's a lightning storm, puts you in a bad way real quick.
Should we be just creating a fund for them?
We did. That's what this is.
This is for improvements.
Well, is it improvements and repairs?
Design, repair, replace, construct, install.
Design, repair.
Design, repair, replacement, construction, installation of various.
Covers the whole gamut.
Water infrastructure.
Improvement is involved.
And associated work.
Yeah, but so isn't repairs?
Including all incidental and related costs.
What would you call it?
It's like water fund, water system, water, water system infrastructure fund. Because it's, an improvement to me tells me you have a plan, you're designating the money for like, you're going to boost all the pumping abilities. An emergency fund to me is to what Ron said, is where if something fails overnight, we get hit by a crazy storm, and you've got to drain the account to pay skillings or whoever to repair the system. I don't know, just like.
But I mean, it's in the.
So I said emergency, I mean, I, I think what this is for is if there is an emergency, they have money there.
Yeah.
But it's not necessarily only for emergencies. Like if they get through the year and there's no emergency, but they know, hey, we have this project that needs to get done, and they may just go ahead and use it for that, knowing that we're going, we're going to have retained earnings next year, we're going to have a portion of money next year, hopefully, thanks Christ. And, you know, we'll look at what we have certified and then appropriate based on that for the following year. The idea was, we kind of went back and forth on, should we bake something in the budget every year rather than doing this, or should we take the retained earnings and have article money set aside for it, similar to what we do with capital every year? And I landed on, my recommendation is I landed on retained earnings because if you're baking in the budget, you're, you're basically increasing rates annually because you're baking, you're increasing the budget.
Right.
That needs to be funded for rates. So rather than doing that, I thought the better alternative was, let's use retained earnings. Every year we'll go, we'll have the article in place. If we don't have sufficient one year, then we won't be able to do it. But hopefully we'll be able to do it. And, and it will act as kind of, you know, an annual, just standard article that appears on the warrant.
I mean, that makes, so it's money that's already coming in. It's not new money that the taxpayers.
Right.
Be paying, so.
That is true.
Makes more sense to do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, so the retained earnings are similar to generated, similar to how free cash is generated on the general fund side. So if we bring more revenue in than what we planned, and if we spend less than what we budgeted, those two things total, and that's our retained earnings certification every year.
How about rather than just, just say it's a fund instead of an improvements, water system infrastructure fund?
I, we're not creating a fund now.
Is it, is it difficult?
We're not creating a fund.
Is it, is it difficult to change that language at this point in time?
I mean, we could, it would just delay posting and everything like that.
Well, no.
Just, we're just like, we're at semantics, like.
We could.
Well.
Oh, well, you understand.
It covers everything and what it would be used for, I think.
There's a narrative after that which explains it in, in greater detail. I'm, I'm okay with that, although the title in and of itself may be somewhat misleading, infrastructure improvements, but when you go on to read the rest of it, it does.
Okay. I think it's fine.
I think it does the trick.
It is.
I think that's what it is.
If it fails, you want to improve that failure.
Seriously, I'm not kidding. If we think the title of the article is misleading, we should one hundred percent change it because that's not, that's not the intent of the warrant. The warrant is to be very clear on what we have taken.
Yeah.
If it's misleading, we should change it. I don't understand how it is, but if you think it is, let's come up with a better name because I don't, I don't want anything to be misleading on the warrant. That's the last thing I want.
Yeah, but I don't think you can capture all of this in a title. Like, I, I think you're okay with it. The fact that the rest of it, it goes through significant detail to explain what that money could be used for.
It makes sense.
We didn't mislead anybody.
It.
You know, my only.
It's a per hearing.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm, I wasn't a good student in the classroom. My first thought was, oh, what are they improving? I'm going to read the rest of this. That was literally my brain's like, oh, I didn't realize the water department was doing something.
Yeah.
Like, what are they going to improve?
Well.
And here we are.
Okay.
Because I think of people who were so against the town taking the burden of the water rate. Remember, we had that, it was many moons ago?
Yeah.
And had the town taxpayers responsible for someone else to get their water. And now we're going to offer them an improvement? Is your well going to get improved this year?
Well, we're not offering.
It's not, but wait.
I know, I'm just playing it out.
No, no, but the money that's going toward the improvements, which they are, I don't know how else to say it, is water rate money.
It's already been.
It's not taxpayer money.
Yeah.
Right, but the town subsidizes that.
No, they don't. No, they don't. No. The, well, the only way, the only way they subsidize is through the, the bond payment of the tank, not the operations. We do not subsidize the operations, the water department. I, I don't think we have since I've been here. Maybe the first year, but the last two, no.
Yeah.
And I don't, we do, again, we do have a standard article on the warrant for that in the case we need it, because in the past, we have had to do that. But we didn't do it last year. I don't, I have not been notified of the faculty to do this year. That said, we do, the tax rate subsidizes fifty percent of the bond payments annually for the water tire, for the water tank. But this is water rate money.
Okay.
I won't be the dead horse here. I'll be a better student in the classroom.
Thank you. Is there a motion? All right, never mind, we've already done that. Okay, Article ten, Community Preservation Committee Recommendations. Eleven is removal of invasive weeds at Lake Massapeau, that's a CPA project. Are these the ones we want to either support or not support?
Well, are there any here that we're not supporting?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either, no.
Okay. Article twelve, Larder Field Improvements, thirteen, Larder Field Master Plan, fourteen is Woodward Mill Dam Improvement, fifteen, tennis pickleball court at Larder Field, that's to, as Jason said earlier, to do the drainage work. Sixteen, Establishment of the Dunstable Commission on Excessibility, seventeen, the lease purchase What's this for specifically?
Truck.
Okay. Yeah. Eighteen, Chapter ninety funds, nineteen, the Veterans Tax Exemption Annual Cost of Living Increase, twenty, municipal charges lien, and twenty-one, the amendments to amend section fifteen point two floodplain district, the town zoning bylaw. That's it, right? This is.
There was some debate on the social media platform about charges and liens, but I don't think, I don't know if it was quite related to this article per se, but just to follow.
All right, we all set here?
Okay.
Move to sponsor twenty twenty-five annual town meeting warrant articles, one, two.
So you're talking about two things. One is sponsoring them just to put them on the warrant. You could also take a vote to support all the articles on the warrant.
Well, okay, my question with that is, we're numerically out of sequence here. We've got one, two, no three, four, five, six, no seven, we have an eight, and then we go from eight to seventeen. We, we, I think we're going to vote them to approve all of them?
So you approve the warrant, there are some warrants on the article, I'm sorry.
Some articles.
Articles on the warrant that the select board sponsors, meaning you sponsor the articles to place them on the warrant. Typically, you don't, you don't sponsor every article on the warrant.
Okay.
So these, these are the ones that you're on, that you're sponsoring.
Never mind.
However, however, no, no, but you're, you're making a good point.
Yeah.
If you'd like, if you want us to take a vote to support the articles on the warrant, you can do that too.
Yeah, but voting this, but.
But you got to sponsor, you got to, you got to sponsor the ones that need to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Fellow board member.
Read the motion.
We want to support all the articles. In my opinion.
I have no issue with all of them.
I don't have an issue with it. I read this warrant.
The only one that gives me pause is because we don't know what the planning board is going to do for one of the CPA articles. But I don't want to say, no, I don't want to support that because.
And, and honestly, if the planning board doesn't acquire the, the expanded.
Then we can take.
Reclamance.
Yeah, exactly.
Which ones are?
In that case, I have no issue with supporting all of the articles on the warrant.
It's Article fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay, I move to support, excuse me, I move to sponsor twenty twenty-five annual town meeting articles, all inclusive. Second.
Does that make sense?
Sure. You want to sponsor all the articles?
Sponsor and support.
Yep.
Okay. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on.
Okay, the Union Building, contract with Pappas Industries for the general contractor for the exterior restoration of the building. The Union Building Committee, there were two bids that were submitted. Quite a big difference between the two numbers, but the lowest bid was recommended, they were found to be fit to serve, I guess, for the, for the project. And the committee reviewed that as well and did choose to go with the lowest bidder and put that request forward to the select board. So it was actually good, it was significantly lower than, than what we have allotted through the CPA funds, which is fantastic.
Yeah.
And they have, should be able to get the work done, should be. They're claiming they will get the work done. The start date that we've asked and the time period that we've asked needs to be completed before it starts.
Right.
So we need to.
Do it for free.
You with us, Ron?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
You ready? I move to approve the contract between the town of Dunstable and Pappas Industries for the exterior restoration of the Union Building in the amount of six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the board. Second.
Is there any further discussion? None? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we can go. Okay, release of overlay funds, if you could just give a quick explanation on that for the public would be great.
Sure. So overlay is what we use to fund abatements. And what Board of Assessors uses to fund abatements. And I, the Board of Assessors has agreed to release twenty-five thousand dollars from overlay to help us balance FY twenty-six project. So this is just, we, in order to release the funds, the select board has to request the release of the funds. But the Board of Assessors was also, has already agreed to do that.
Okay. Well, I think that's a good idea, I, 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 I understand it, I think it's a great idea, absolutely. Twenty-five K is twenty-five K.
It is.
We all set with this one?
Yeah.
Move to approve the release of twenty-five thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty twenty-five overlay account to support the fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating budget in accordance with the vote of the Board of Assessors. Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we will be now entering into executive session.
They're not gonna come back?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll come, we'll be coming back, yeah. So we will be entering to executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, three, pursuant to purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions with respect to collective bargaining, bargaining with the Dunstable Police Union, NVPBA, Local Number Seven. Roll call.
Ron Michael, yes.
Karen Gann, yes.
Leah Baskins, yes.